I will call a board meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Here.
Here.
White and Tralka?
Here.
We'll now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
Second.
All who's in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All who's opposed say no. We have an agenda. Item number two is recognition for the Cedar Falls High School men's golf team. They were unable to zoom in or unable to attend our meeting because apparently they have some golf activity going on in the Des Moines area. So we do have a plaque for them. For the team members are Jack Beecher, Anthony Galvin, Sam Jamir, J.J. Nelson, Max Hoa, Owen Sawyer, and Evan Schofield. The coaches are Jeremy Longnecker, Ryan Schultz, and Mike Sawyer. So congratulations to the golf players from the Cedar Falls High School. And I will get that plaque over to them tomorrow. All right. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Years of Service Awards. Mr. Veder?
Yes, we have one award today for 20 years of service from the Assessors Office, Victoria S. Jasper.
Thank you. Victoria, would you like to approach the podium and say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks for your service.
And that's the only one, Mr. Veder?
That's the only one, yes.
Okay. Item number five. I will make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. Second.
This week's expenditures total $174,118.59, of which Secondary Roads $85,917, and finally Jail Commissary $10,173. Everything looks normal.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item number six is a presentation in regard to the local union community charities. Presentation by Jay Larson. Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jay Larson. I am the Director of Giving at Local Union Community Charities. Thank you. Need my big mug on that right there. But thank you for having me today. Just want to introduce a charity that we started a few years ago. And it was kind of stagnant for a few years, and we've just bolstered it up and added some staffing to it. And what it amounts to is we would take money in from different areas, and that money would be allocated out through committees that will be formed in each different area. So one of the niches to this is the unions all over the state are pitching in to pay for staffing and administrative fees so we can tell our donors that 100% of their money is going back into the community. So that's a big deal for us. We're almost there, or we can promise that, but just not quite yet. So wherever the money comes in from, I'll just use Waterloo, Cedar Falls area, there'll be a committee formed in this area, and they will decide where the money goes. So it'll be totally up to them, and they won't be restricted like some other organizations. We can donate to any 501(c)(3). So I don't know if that explains everything. What do you think, Mark?
How are your committee members determined, I guess?
They'll probably be determined by the business agent for different unions. They will decide who from their union they want to represent on the committees.
Okay, so relatively small inside?
We wouldn't want to go like over 10 for each area.
Great.
And then we determine that by address from the donors or the local union that they're giving through. So.
So is there a criteria that's established, or it's just very open for decision-making, I guess?
It's pretty open. What'll happen is these committees will make recommendations to the board. So I'll get the recommendations and make sure there's nothing flusy or whatever about that charity. And then the board will probably approve whatever the committee wants to, so.
Thank you.
Chris or Tom, do you have questions?
Nope, it sounds like a great program. I think the unions are taking this in this direction.
Yeah, I agree. It's a good job that they're doing this, so I appreciate them doing it too.
Yeah, our board's made up of 25 union members and five committee members. So Mark is one of our committee members. That's non-union, but a big ally to us, so.
Great, great. Craig?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Yes.
You mentioned it was rather slow starting, and so you're assuming like marketing this to others?
We are doing the best we can marketing with the budget we have, because it's kind of just getting started. We've only had staff for three months. So we've had the charity for two and a half years, I think, or three years.
So really just getting established then?
Yeah. So that's why we're trying to do these things, to inform communities what we're doing, so.
So as far as contacting you or send if people want to?
Our website, if you look at that, and people that don't have a flyer, it's www.lucciowa.org. So our website's pretty good, so I'd invite you to check that out.
And you could give right online to the?
You can donate on our website. And we also have our own pledge forms, and we have automatic withdrawal from banking if they wanted to go that route. We're really trying to do is get in these companies and tell them what we're about, and let them do payroll deduction. That's a big deal when you're talking about donations is payroll deduction.
When people get online, can they just tell you who they'd like to donate to? Or are you living it kind of open-ended, like you'll make the determination?
Our pledge forms have a designation spot on that. So they can give to any 501(c)(3) through that pledge form. And hopefully the company will do payroll deducts so they can make that more of a, not a one-time hit.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven. Receive project updates from department heads or elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. We are still cleaning ditches probably for another week or two until the ground gets froze up. We have also started doing bridge inspections. Ryan is starting, he is working primarily in the south half of the county this year doing those bridge inspections. And then with the changing seasons, of course, our mechanics are placing the plows on the single axle and the tandem axle dump trucks. And then once the spot rock is done, they'll be placing the spreaders on the backs of those trucks as well. So we are getting prepared for the coming winter season. Can I answer any questions at this time?
How'd the training go?
I thought the training went very well. Thank you for coming and speaking with our employees, Secondary Roads employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? Sandy?
Good morning, Board. Sandy Smith, County Recorder. I just wanted to make you aware of an event coming up that our office is going to participate in. November 15th through the 19th is International Education Week, and we have been contacted by you and I to come participate in a passport day. We've done similar events like this, but this is the first time they've ever had this, I guess. So if we have the staff and can do it, we always like to go to these events to provide as much information, especially in regards to passports as the information is changing almost weekly. So we're going to try to send two agents. It's 11 to 3 on the 17th, and then we will keep one agent here to process passports here at the courthouse. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide an update? Item number eight. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from October 26th, 2021. Second. Any comments or questions? All who's in favor say aye. Aye. All who's opposed say no. Number nine is the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item 10A is a resolution that the minor plat of surveys submitted by Tim and Cindy Vogel to minor plat 9.73 acres located at 741 South Ordway Road. In order to construct one new single-family home, the property in question is located approximately the 1,000 feet to the north of the South Ordway Road and Osage Road intersection. And if approved, that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Black Hawk County Recorder. I'll make that motion. Second. Okay, Seth?
Okay, all right. Yeah, request to plat 9.73 acres in order to construct one new single-family home was moved by Bozier and seconded by Nagle to approve the request to plat 9.73 acres in order to construct one new single-family home. The request was unanimously approved. The 9.73 acres in question is located at 741 South Ordway Road, which is about 1,000 feet north of the South Ordway Road and Osage Road intersection. The parcel containing the 7.73 acres to be platted was approved to rezone 2.5 acres from agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at the regular meeting on July 20th, 2021, and was approved by the Board of Supervisors on August 24th, 2021. The approved 2.5 acre rezoned area was previously zoned AR agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. Shrouding areas all zoned agricultural district. The plat is designated as agricultural. None of the area to be rezoned is in the special flood hazard area. The applicant wishes to plat 9.73 acres and the two lots. The two-acre lot already contains a home. The 7.73 acre parcel is large enough to accommodate one developer lot that has 2.5 acre zoned AR, which means the lot size requirements by being greater than 1.5 acres in size and wider than 150 feet are met. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval at the regular meeting on October 19th, 2021, and Technical Review Committee didn't have any issues with the request.
Any comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item 10B is a resolution to set a hearing at such time as the law on publication permits and to publish notice thereof in accordance with the Iowa Code. Second. For comment, discussion, and potential vote on passage of the following proposal. Resolution to enter into an agreement and to authorize the chair to sign the same for the sale of parcel T, a triangle-shaped parcel along the edge of the Black Hawk County Shop on Dale Drive in Hudson, Iowa, with a width of 3.18 feet on its wide end and coming to a point at its other end, and further and more precisely described in the Crawford Engineering Survey of the same to Holmes Welding and Fabrication for the price of $500 with all costs associated with the transaction borne by the buyer. Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? We did have a lengthy discussion about this, I guess, a month and a half ago, and it sounds like this business, of course, will, this will help assist their business. So Mr. Holmes, I believe it was, approached us. The purchase of this parcel, engineering agreed that they don't need this small size. It looks like it's a little more than three feet at its widest end. Kathy?
Yes, that is what we decided. We would be able to part with that small.
We're just setting the public hearing date today is all we're doing. The discussion comes under the public hearing, so that's probably should wait to have discussion then.
Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item 10C is a resolution that the appointment of Heather Jackson as Assistant County Attorney effective October 25th, 2021, through December 31st, 2022 be approved and directed to the chair to sign for same as recommended by Brian J. Williams, Black Hawk County Attorney. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item 10D is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid submitted by Schumacher Elevator Company, Denver, Iowa, for elevator servicing between December 5th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, for Black Hawk County to be approved and for the chair to sign the contract contingent to the receipt of certificate of insurance and performance bond as recommended by Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. We did receive three bids for this service. Schumacher did come in at the low bid of $1,555. Just to give you a breakout of the difference between this proposal and our last contract resulted in an increase of approximately $325 per month, which that is separated out amongst four different sites. Courthouse resulted in $195 increase. The jail resulted in a $20 a month increase. Our Pinecrest facility resulted in a $100 per month increase. And conservation resulted in a $10 per month increase. Again, total 325 over our last contract.
Any questions for Rory?
Rory, are we just doing the one elevator out of Pinecrest?
For this particular service, it is just the one elevator, yes.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes. Item 10E is discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. It looks like Josh will be providing the update. Josh?
Yes, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Boney asked me to be on and provide a brief update for everybody with our numbers. So we did unfortunately return to the high-risk level yesterday, and I'll get into the, so part of the reason why is that we were on Friday at the end of the day made aware of a delay in reporting of some COVID-19 test results that dated back to September, which led to an increased number of new positive test results over the weekend. That error has now been corrected, and approximately 300 new cases were added to Black Hawk County's positive case count over the weekend. And that is addition to our usually expected cases over the weekend. Most of these cases occurred in September and early October and didn't have an effect on our current rates or percent positivity. But the more recent cases that were included in the delay did have some impact. And we did see our cases over the last seven days increase, as well as a slight increase in percent positivity. And it's our cases per day that put us back into the high category as we're now at 124 cases per 100,000 over the last seven days as of yesterday morning. With the increase, our total number of positives is 20,918. Recovery is 19,363. We are at 9.1% positivity. The 124 cases per 100,000 over the last seven days, and then 359 deaths. Update on vaccines. Working with our healthcare partners, there have been 162,593 doses of COVID-19 vaccine administered in Black Hawk County according to 81,944 completed vaccine series. And then an update on the Pfizer vaccine for 5- to 11-year-olds. FDA did issue their emergency authorization for those doses at the end of the week last week. And so now those doses are to be discussed by the ACIP. Actually, today they are meeting to discuss those recommendations. And then once ACIP issues their recommendations, they would require CDC approval before vaccines start to be administered. Are there any questions from the board?
No, it doesn't appear there is. Josh?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any board members have any comments?
I ended up getting the Moderna vaccine, and I had a significant exposure to COVID about a month ago. A person who was in their 30s, incredibly healthy. And I'm not pitting one vaccination against the other, but she had the Pfizer vaccination, and she got COVID, and I did not. So, I mean, this monster is interesting. So, and she had relatively few symptoms, cold-like. Her two-year-old child as well had it, had COVID and had cold-like systems. But on four separate occasions, I tested negative, three home kits and one kit through the pharmacy. I was, and as soon as I was exposed, I quarantined for, oh, I guess, four days until that fourth test result that showed I was negative. So this monster is interesting.
All right. Item 11A is the discussion in regard to all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding. James?
Sure, I'm sharing my screen as we speak here, so it should be popping up momentarily.
Marie, can you turn on the TV that faces the audience?
Do you hear Rory?
Did you hear that?
Is it coming on?
Yep, thank you.
I'm going to try to zoom out as well so we can incorporate more information here, but... So as of right now, we've heard every, from every department regarding Phase 1. And so right now, what I would like to start looking at is getting these projects approved. Moving forward, if there's any questions from the board, answering those questions, perhaps tabling the ones that we need a little bit more clarification on, that kind of thing. But right now, I kind of want to leave it up to the board to have any discussions and ask me any questions. Otherwise, but, I mean, otherwise this is Phase 1, and whatever you want to move forward, we can get on the budget amendment and start looking at Phase 2 come budget time.
James? Yes, Linda, please.
No, I was just going to ask the question. Last week, we talked a little bit about what's in Phase 2, what kinds of projects or other phases. And I know I've put you on the spot, so have you had an opportunity, I guess, to explain that a little?
Yeah, I can pull up everyone's list. We did focus, we did focus really just on Phase 1 because this is what we wanted to get out to the board, and so that was the primary focus, was just this. Phase 2 and Phase 3 haven't necessarily been identified, but the projects really are focusing around the study that's been approved for the space needs and just kind of moving forward with that. So I don't have a Phase 2 list, just because we're really focusing on Phase 1. And then Phase 2, we're going to start incorporating during budget, so.
I assume Phase 2 items will be identified quite possibly through our space needs assessment?
We can do that. You know, we are going to be, as Rory indicated, the space needs study is going to be taking a little bit longer. And it is going to put us kind of relatively late into the budget process. So some of those projects, we can, we'll have to do a budget amendment come FY '23. But those will be identified later on, yeah.
How will we handle those? I guess I'm thinking if there were some really large space needs that we identify and would be helpful, it could be millions of dollars, obviously. So to move into another phase, I guess, and identify dollars for a program might prohibit us from doing some of the, I guess, later?
Yes and no. Right now, I don't foresee us even coming close to the budget or the limit of the $25.4 million. So I don't see us coming close to that right now. As you can see, our total estimated for Phase 1 left over, we've approved 3.5% of our dollar amount, and that's about 900,000. Today, if all the projects went through, that's a little under 2.3 million, and that's only 8.9%. So we have a lot of room in there for the extremely large projects. Yeah, I would say maybe we kind of do hold off for the space study. But the nice part about that space study is it's also going to lay out, as it did in 1995, it's going to lay out many different phases that we can go on, and they are going to know our timeline. And so they, and the budget dollars. And so when we get that space needs study back, it is going to lay everything out for us in kind of a nice little bow, so to speak. If there is something that comes out of that that is extremely over our budget, then yeah, we would address that. I just don't see that happening as of right now.
Well, one of the things I guess that came up last week that I paid particular attention to that I thought was important to us, you know, before, we've really looked from an infrastructure standpoint that roads and bridges and things like that weren't included. And in Senate Bill 3011 last week that passed, it was a bipartisan bill and that passed. And one of the things that I thought really caught my attention in my eye was that up for us, it would have been like $10 million for roads could be allocated for roads and bridges. And so I thought that's a big chunk, not that we'd want to spend all of that on roads and bridges, but that we might have some particular projects that we'd like to see done, and those would eat away quite a bit of dollars. I know they were hoping to get that passed, you know, by the end of the week, but I'm not sure. Like I said, it did have Senate approval, or Senate approval, so House is only what's needed right now. And hopefully that would come too, but that would be something, I know Kathy's always done an excellent job, her department, of having like a five-year plan of what roads and bridges we'd have out there that we could easily identify, but that might be something we need to take a look at pretty soon, too. But I just thought some of those dollars or our projects, if it's something for roads and bridges, those are millions of dollars in buildings if we were to do something with a building. I know one of the things we talked about earlier too, and I think it involved maybe with the space study, I saw in the last space study in 1995 that standalone facility was one of the possibilities that we could do, they suggested in there of a standalone facility adjacent to the courthouse, I think it said. And I just thought there'd been some discussion, I know at some of your meetings, about maybe, you know, some possibilities of addressing some of the needs, whether they were storage or parking or whatever, that had come up. And that too would be a project that would be rather large. But I just thought, I guess my fear has always been that we spend money and then have regrets later that maybe we could have used for projects that would benefit us or the county more. So that was really my reluctance when I said I wasn't sure how much I wanted to vote on today. Not that there aren't good projects out there, but as Craig, you know, identified too, the parking, you know, liking to have in-house or have under-roof housing for the vehicles and that type of thing. Having the vehicles, our county vehicles covered.
Oh, that's out of Pinecrest.
Yeah, but I just mean some of those things are having...
Rory, did you get a price on that?
And Longfellow, you know, there's been some discussion about those kind of relocations that would, could possibly...
That was in the plan in 1995.
Yeah.
So my thought is, we're going to just, we're either going to move on some of this stuff or just kick it down, kick the can down the road again, like we usually do on stuff. For Kathy's stuff, I'd say we're on course. We've been doing this stuff over the years. And we're doing a great job on roads and bridges. I think we need to spend more time on infrastructure or things we need for around here, out at Pinecrest, and concentrate on that stuff. concentrate on that stuff more.
Well, those are the kinds of things, like the space study, I think you're talking about, would be identified in that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, James?
Real quick, I, I do wanna unpack a little bit of what, what you said, so, uh, this, this money that's, um, that you're referring to, that is potentially gonna be approved here pretty soon, that would be for infrastructure. This, the, the ARP dollars that we're referencing are COVID-related, and so, when, when we look at roads and bridges, roads and bridges wouldn't necessarily qualify under this bill, but what would qualify is if we were to, uh, if we were to expand in some sort of space, what we can, what we can kinda chalk it up to is, is, is our employees being able to spread apart, our, our IT infrastructure is allowing us to work remote or in, or in different places, and so, it, it does, it does help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, um, but again, that's, that's why they're, that's why they're addressing this, uh, infrastructure bill, is because that is something that's gonna be on top of, um, what's, what's already in place, and so, um, there's, there's a lot of things that we can do with, with the revenue side of things, uh, but that is much lower than, than the, than the, the bill dollars that, that we can, uh, approve for, for COVID-19.
Well, as they explained last week, that said that, that lost revenue would, um, assist with the roads and bridges, so that's something we just need to keep an eye on.
Right.
As we go forward, because it said it was gonna be treated as if it was lost revenue.
Correct.
Where's the scrub, the scrubbers that Rory was talking about, where are they at?
Uh, they are...
Split up between Pinecrest?
Correct, yeah, so, yep, so they're, they are within each, um, within each of these line items, courthouse, jail, and Pinecrest. Let me, uh, I'm gonna try to pull up a different screen here, and then I can kinda show...
So, are those primarily what you wanna look at today, James, those that would be like, for us, housing people safer, um, those types of things?
I'm, I mean...
I guess I'm thinking air quality and some of those things that we wanna do or we thought we could do to the buildings that make people, people safer. Um, I think Rory had a, I mean, not that we wouldn't wait till the space study, but the elevator, additional elevator and some of those types of things were ones that were in some of those Phase Ones, weren't they?
Right. So, what's, uh, what we're looking at here is, this is gonna be the maintenance Phase One. My screen's a little bit different here, so I'm gonna try to adjust it accordingly here. Uh, so, on the bottom here, you have courthouse, jail, JCS, uh, which we're holding off on JCS until we have that space study, but, um, yeah, so courthouse, right now, uh, we, we did approve that space need, so x-ray machines, uh, phone service, uh, fire suppression system, uh, this is your air scrubbers, Craig, uh, the ultraviolet, uh, uh, eradication kits, and then the, and then the VAV box upgrade, those would be the courthouse projects. And then this is jail, so, so for the, for the departments that are kind of encompassing different departments, I summarized it on, on the page that I was just showing you, uh, and then, and then this breaks it down more specifically.
And James, if I'm not mistaken, part of this desire for this funding is to, uh, infuse the money into our local economy?
Ideally, yes.
I think, and the things are not to be the, I say, I did a lot of reading just in the last week, but I said, they talked about turning the tide of the pandemic and addressing the economic fallout that counties and cities have had, and then laying a foundation for a strong recovery, and, yeah, I think, like I said...
And, yep, and, and mitigation moving forward, so, if we did, uh, you know, heaven forbid, if we did have another pandemic in, you know, five years, or, you know, whatever that looks like, then, uh, we're gonna be in a much better place to, to fight it and then keep the, keep the, uh, economy, uh, moving in, in the right direction, so it's, it's less of a, you know, halt everything kinda thing.
Oh, for sure. I think you were thinking probably some of the projects that will stimulate the economy here.
Yeah, local contractors, local vendors, with, uh, employees working for those companies who live within our communities. And that's where the, I mean, uh, we receive money, the city of Waterloo received money, Cedar Falls received money, the lines get, I mean, we're a county, I, 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 I'm trying to be mindful too of the projects that Waterloo and Cedar Falls are engaging in, so we don't have duplication, but that we can, uh, you know, have a desirable impact on the whole county. It's interesting to see wo- other counties, they're already getting lobbied for that money by organizations, special interest groups, whatever you wanna call them. Uh, we haven't been hit too heavy with that yet. Uh, twenty-five-point-five million dollars is a lot of money.
Well, I think we haven't reached out either for that reason, I think we've had some of the meetings where people were at least wanting us to be sure and consider county, some of the department heads, making sure we looked at county needs before we opened some of those doors and said, hey, approach us, but I did see last week, you can pool monies, you can certainly pool funds, so I thought, that opens a possibility for us too, to partner with cities, other cities or other groups, but...
Mm-hmm, because we have trans...
That takes discussions.
Transportation needs, uh, economic needs potentially, Chris?
Yeah, I, I, I like this, I think the, the Phase One list is, is pretty solid, um, but I do, before we get too far into Phase Two, um, we do need to have some of those conversations with, with community partners to, um, 'cause right now, we're not taking on anything to adjust, um, holes in our local social safety net, and I'm particularly thinking about housing, um, we're all well aware that we still need a permanent, um, warming center location, and this is a perfect opportunity, um, and something that's allowable with this funding. And so, before we get too far into our discussions of, of Phase Two, um, we need to have, have those conversations and, and see what we can do there.
Have you been, been actively looking for a place, Chris?
Yep, it's, it's been actively going on, um, and Dan's been a part of it too, um, for, for over the last year and a half, and it's just, it's a matter of, of, of funding, and it's a matter of, you know, we, we jump around from temporary location to temporary location, and it's just not sustainable right now.
Has the location been, has there been a location, um, that you're, you know, looking at, Chris, or permanent?
Yeah, there are, there are, uh, currently two different ones, one that, um, we, we really liked, but it's still a matter of, and there are grants, um, pending, grant applications pending on those, but, um, so we'll know more on, on the success of that in the coming weeks.
Tom, did you, did I see you light up there?
I just wanted, um, a question I had for Chris on this, that he wrote up a warming center, um, where's this at, seeing as that this would be in the city of Waterloo, and they do have funding too, I think it's twenty-eight million or something, where's this at on their priority list, uh, in regards to a warming center, do you know?
Uh, no, I don't know, but I think, um, what we're looking at, twenty-five and a half million dollars that we have, uh, versus an investment of under two-hundred thousand dollars to solve a problem we've had for decades, I'm not, um, you know, I would like to have city participation, but I'm not going to pass up the project just 'cause we don't.
No, but I, I, yeah, and I agree with you on that, I'm, I'm just, I, I just can't wonder why that would be on the radar of the city of Waterloo, um, or even listed as a priority, uh, with the funding that they have. And maybe it's something that they don't wanna maintain down the road, I don't know, because once the money's gone, they're gone, and then the question is, who's gonna maintain it?
Yep.
Uh, whether it be, uh, structure, uh, personnel, uh, you name it, and, uh, somebody's gonna have to put their label on there unless it's gonna stay a non-profit, uh, like it currently is, I believe, I don't know if it is, I think it is registered as a non-profit, that group is working with it, yes. I think it's, it's to behold them to continue searching for grant money, which they're doing right now, I think they're doing a good job of that, uh, but it'd also be nice, see Waterloo kinda put that on their list or priority, uh, and, uh, seeing that they're working on the city of Waterloo, where the county's actually working not only in the city limits of Waterloo and Cedar Falls, we've got the Laports, the Hudson's, the Dunkertons, the Durs, the Evansdells and so forth, so we have to kinda look at it as a larger scale. Uh, I think there's a couple opportunities here for Black Hawk County, uh, for projects that we can get done that normally we probably wind up, and it's twofold, uh, it's a project that we can get done for Black Hawk County, but it also helps the, uh, area, uh, contractors, but the, I think the one key factor that we have to look at is, currently, everybody's looking at projects locally like Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and the contractors are kinda limited, and the biggest thing that's tying their hands are, uh, materials. And, uh, we have, uh, till, when is it, James, to determine some of these projects, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four?
December of twenty-twenty-four is when we have to have it allocated.
Hopefully by then, or way before then, there'll be a little bit more ease of, of product material, because right now, I think half your bids would be turned down for the mere fact that they don't have the help, and they can't simply get the material. Um, so I think, um, we can do some of these early projects, but also look down the road long-term on some larger projects that we can do in the county, uh, that'll benefit both, uh, area contractors and also benefit, uh, us, the county, um, for the future to come.
When there's needs that, uh, do we even have, um, business venturing into, like childcare, there's federal legislation potentially, uh, pending that could positively impact that, but that is a need in our local community, but does the county have any business in that? I, I think we do to a point, I don't know what the solution is, if the solution is funding, but, I mean, these are discussions we need to have in regard to this funding, because, and how much did, uh, I, I can't recall what each community got, I know we got the most significant amount.
Actually, I think Waterloo got a little higher.
They did, okay.
Up, up top of my head, I think they're close to, close to thirty million, and Cedar Falls is about the same, and then all the other communities got, were so much smaller chunks.
Gotcha.
Waterloo was thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay, okay, I thought they were less than us, but I, I'm mistaken. But...
Did Waterloo ever post a list or Cedar Falls on what projects they're actually doing?
No.
Can you get some of that for the board? I, I'm just curious, I really, you know, I really don't care, we'll do our thing, I'm just curious what they're spending their money on, is it road, infrastructure, or...
And, uh, last, last night Waterloo just approved, um, a study of their spring fiber optic to, to homes in Waterloo.
Oh, okay, did you see that? Did you see that, and that's what they're planning on using the monies for then?
At least, at least, I think it was like two million something for the study, and so that's just one part of, one part of it, um, if, implementation of that would be very pricey, so everybody's planning a part of that, but I think that, that brings up a good, um, example of both, uh, our discussion here about, um, what the other places doing, that a, a joint section, um, between these different, with us and these municipalities, I think is something the community would benefit from.
I agree, Chris, that, but you know, really, over the years, if you really stop and look at it, sit at it, they, they really don't really have too much discussion, uh, with the county and the cities, I mean, they pretty much do their thing, and, uh, they don't really, uh, kinda involve themselves with the county. It, it'd have to be something that we would have to, um, initiate, um, but traditionally, it just seems like everybody goes their own way, the city of Waterloo does what they're gonna do, Cedar Falls is the same way, and then your small commi- communities, you know, obviously, they, they're on a lesser scale, but it just, you, you know, you, you just think that you would work together a little bit closer, but that really hasn't happened, in my opinion, over the years.
Would it be worth it?
It gets difficult, because like I said, there's timelines and things that people have to meet, and having different groups get together, and, and so, it, it's all, but if they were willing to partner, it sure be a nice opportunity to...
Well, would it be worth it?
But I think we really need to concentrate, there's probably some good projects out there for Black Hawk County that's gonna benefit our, all our county people, and I think we really need to, uh, come up with them, and there's some bridges and roads, roads that Linda had talked about earlier, but there's also some buildings, things that'll make it easier for our taxpayers and county people, uh, that utilize our services, so I, I think there's some opportunities that maybe we need to come up with yet.
Well, I'm wondering if it'd be worth it for us as a board to send correspondence to all the cities, just asking, uh, you, we wanna work with you, we wanna be aware of what you're doing, so that we, uh, don't needlessly spend funding on items, and just ask if, uh, if they would give us a synopsis as this evolves of what they're planning to utilize the funding for, not that we're nosy, but so that we can work with them to achieve what they establish as goals.
I agree, but good luck.
Well, I think the openness to the sharing information is very prominent, because we could be, we don't wanna duplicate efforts, so...
All right, I'll generate a letter and I'll get it out to the board and...
See what way they respond.
Make whatever edits you'd like, and we can try to get that out within a week.
Sounds good.
Any more comments, questions?
How are we gonna approach Phase One, that everything that was in Phase One is approved? Because I don't think that...
Well, and that's, that was, I mean, that's, that's the idea, but I, but again, you know, when, when I say, if, if there's something that we wanna table, anything that we want more discussion on, anything that there, that needs more clarity, uh, feel free to pull from the list, I, I just know that there's, there's items on here that we can get moving on, that we can get started, uh, and, and, uh, the items that we can, or that we wanna discuss a little bit more in-depth, we can, uh, but for instance, you know, digitizing transfer books for the auditor's office, which is on the screen right there, um, you know, that's, that's a great project to have, there's, there's a lot of benefits that come out of that, um, and, and that's something that we can kinda get started on, so, that's, that, that in itself is a lengthy process.
What's the explanation for that, of how that benefits us, as far as making our buildings safer and doing something, a project like that?
Well, I mean, for, for one, uh, well, Grant can speak to a little bit more in-depth than I can, but that's, uh, the benefit is, uh, not touching transfer books, not having people walk into the courthouse to do that, uh, and then assuming, you know, if, if there were to be a disaster coming in, a tornado, a fire, anything like that, those transfer books are the transfer books, and so, digitizing them, uh, is gonna be extremely beneficial moving forward, so, there's, there's quite a bit of benefits that walk into the, these projects, and, and I don't wanna steal anything away from Grant, but, um, but those, these, you know, the, these are why these, these are in Phase One, so...
Oh, great, no, and I, I can appreciate that, I just think too, from a public standpoint, that's important for them to know, but it is something we should probably be transitioning to in any areas we can, I think we've talked about this before, digitizing, would you not agree, Grant? This is an opportunity, but something we should be doing?
Yes, James expressed it all quite eloquently.
I'm, I'm good...
Thank you.
...with the list as it stands, myself.
That list, or it?
So, I, all except for, I'd like to see the, why don't you get up and explain what you told me the other day, which made a lot of sense to me, at the one that, about the carport, the large carport that we talked about, uh, what, what savings we'll have along the way too, and how much time will be saved for plowing and stuff?
Right, well, one of the items, uh, that we looked at over at the Pinecrest facility, which, um, in this Phase One, you know, I identified a, uh, a structure, uh, an additional maintenance shop structure on Phase One, but what I did not include, which I still need to, um, I guess I would call it more of a carport-type situation for Pinecrest for all of the county, uh, VA, uh, Health Department, and we'd also include the state, um, uh, to be able to park under, and, and what this would do for us in the wintertime particularly, is it would save us a lot of time, because our, our guys have to come in extra early, move those cars out, uh, get them out of the way currently, plow, move them back, and, uh, that's some years that could be pretty challenging, uh, pretty time-consuming, and it just saves on wear and tear on the vehicles, uh, which we've talked about in the past, so, um, I don't have a dollar amount on that yet, and, and in fact, I planned on actually bringing this up, there are a couple items on this Phase One, and I think we had talked about this previously, but with the space needs, uh, assessment, um, just a few of my items that I originally had on this Phase One, I would like to wrap underneath that, that space needs assessment, and a couple of them are pretty big-ticket items, uh, one is the VAV box upgrade, uh, because the space needs not only covers physical space, but it's also gonna cover mechanical, um, and that's for us in maintenance, that's gonna be a huge piece of the study, and, uh, I would really like to be able to see, um, what, uh, what comes out of the study, uh, before we commit to making any changes to, to an item such as that. Um, and then the other one would be, uh, which I know this is kind of, uh, uh, this is an item that the Health Department had brought up as well, but, uh, HVAC renovation for the fifth floor over at Pinecrest, um, some of you may remember, uh, from years back, that's, that's been a topic of discussion, but there again, I, I would like for that one, uh, to really be looked at hard, uh, by this committee, uh, doing the space assessment. So, those two items, James particularly, um, I would, uh, I would like to put underneath that space committee. that space committee.
Yeah, so, um...
Yeah, James, can you bring up the maintenance list?
Yep, let me, I'm gonna update this real quick, because the one thing that I did not update, um, and, and I guess I didn't realize, was the, the VA V-box. I did pull out, uh, Health Department's, um, uh, HVAC transition, and so I, I did pull that out, uh, knowing that we had that conversation about.
Okay.
So, so the only thing that I didn't pull out was the VA V-box. Um, let me, uh, I can update, uh, or I'll start sharing the...
Hey Rory, while, while James is getting that, uh, discussions come up two or three times today and then last week on this carport situation, could you roughly send the board an overview? I'm, I'm kinda confused, the questions I need to know, and I know they'll come eventually, is, first off, what are you talking about a carport? What type? The, uh, estimated cost? How many cars do you expect to be under this carport? And where this carport's gonna be located? If it's gonna be in your parking lot or stuff, how many spots is that gonna take up from our normal parking? Kinda give us the details, so we have a little bit more information on this, rather than just each week saying carport for this cars, and this cars, and this cars. Um, so, see if you can put some of that information together, I know the cause may be a little fuzzy, but, um, kinda give us a little bit more detail, so when we're talking about it, we know exactly, is it just a roof? Is it gonna be a roof and a sides and back, open in the front, blah, blah, blah?
Yep, absolutely, I can do that.
If you can come up with some more information for the board, so we can have a kind of a little bit more discussion on this, uh, very well may be a good idea, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
Nope, absolutely, I will get that for the board. Um, I also wanted to mention, too, under Phase One, we have the, uh, hydraulic elevator over at the Pinecrest facility, um, if we were to bring that back into service, just keep in mind, um, that the, uh, the service contract that you just approved today, uh, that would add, uh, reasonably, I would expect, another two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per month, uh, to that service contract. Um, obviously, that would be, uh, something we would reach out to Schumacher on, but just kinda keep that in the back of your mind also, if we do end up bringing that hydraulic elevator back into service.
Rory, Rory, do you know what percentage of Pinecrest building the county actually occupies, not counting the VA's office, the main Pinecrest building?
Yeah, um, I would...
We have fifty percent, sixty percent what?
Yeah, the DH, uh, the State Department, uh, has approximately fifty-four percent, the rest of that is going back to, is the county, um, which encompasses, uh, the VA Department, uh, County Social Services, which I, I believe they kinda branched off on their own, um, and I, I'd have to get you that percentage, it's very small. Um, the Health Department, uh, would, uh, would encompass the rest of that. So yeah, probably right around forty-five percent.
Okay, be, then the reason I bring that up, folks, is over the years, the state has, uh, uh, kinda hinted that they were going to completely leave, uh, Pinecrest and kinda, uh, put all their services together in more of a, uh, urban area where everybody could go to one shop all. Uh, I was talking to somebody from the state the other day, and that discussion is coming back, so, uh, it's came up a lot over the years, so you don't be surprised if someday we find out that we're sitting with a building out there with only county and no state, uh, services that are going on there. So we'll have to keep, uh, open mind on what we would do at that point also, 'cause it, it's, it's a reality in this day and age where they're trying to, uh, consolidate their services. If they've talked, they did move out, what was it, social services, or what, what moved?
Uh, we, they, they actually closed, uh, the case management portion.
Yeah, they left, and, um, so, it's a possibility, we just should keep that in mind, that we may be sitting with a big, large building that's, we're gonna have to utilize somehow for county services.
So are they still paying for that, Rory? The case management area?
No.
No, uh, actually, that's where, uh, County Social Services moved to.
Oh, okay, oh, that's, uh, pretty much.
Right. They had, uh, fourth floor, uh, west, is where case management used to be housed.
Yeah, I think they moved to Independence when they pulled out, so we just have now currently, what, DHS?
Uh, DHS as a state entity, yes.
Yeah.
Rory, I had a question on, um, the air scrubbers and ultraviolet.
Yep.
So, the, 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 the science is still a little questionable about how much ultraviolet helps, it sounds like it, it can help some, break down like the outer protein of the, of the, of the virus, um, but the most important thing is still that MERV rating, so I'm wondering what, um, the overall MERV rating in the buildings would be after these, um, investments?
We have actually, uh, gone, uh, at the start of COVID, we had gone from a MERV rating of eight, uh, to a thirteen, uh, which is a substantial increase, and we've done that with all of our facilities now, um, and so we've been, we've been utilizing the MERV thirteen filters, uh, so this ultraviolet, uh, would be in combination, uh, with that.
All the systems have been able to handle that, that upgrade to the tighter filter?
We, we have seen a little bit of, uh, a fluctuation, especially over at the jail with airflow, uh, but not to the point where it's, uh, hindered us.
Okay, thank you.
Um, what we may, we haven't, uh, we haven't seen this yet, but I'm sure we will, we may see our frequency increase, um, as far as changing those filters out, uh, we may see a higher frequency than we've had in the past, uh, with the MERV eights.
Did that answer your question, Chris?
Yes, yes, it does.
Rory, I wanna ask a question then on the addition to the maintenance shop, the three bays.
Yeah.
Is, uh, there a definite reason for three as good instead of four, or two, or five?
Um, I don't know, did I identify it as three?
Well, it says addition, adding three bays, I don't, you, some...
Okay, well, that, um, actually...
Really sick.
I gotta get this, Chris, I'll be damned.
Okay. Uh, I just had, uh, I just had an addition to maintenance shop. What I'm actually looking at there, and I, uh, Mike Hendrickson, uh, has been a great help, uh, if you, if you're familiar with their shop behind their, uh, headquarters on Airline Highway, um, I believe you currently have, uh, four, uh, openings, uh, four or five.
Yeah, the building has, I believe that building has, uh, it's got four doors, or...
Yeah. Tom, you're, you got an open line there.
Uh, so our, our existing shop at Pinecrest is sixteen hundred square feet, what I'm proposing is, uh, a forty-eight hundred, uh, square foot addition, uh, which would, forty-eight hundred would be very similar to what Mike has behind the headquarters. Um, with that in mind, I believe we can house all eight of our, uh, vehicles, uh, with plows, um, and then if we were to, uh, look at actually creating that as a main maintenance hub, then I, I believe we can accomplish that as well, over at Pinecrest. Um, the only thing is, keep in mind, um, you know, we would have to go through planning and zoning, we'd have to make sure that we can put that type of a, a larger structure, um, on that, uh, site, and those are hurdles that I haven't, uh, jumped over yet, so all we're looking at right now is just, uh, what we estimate that cost to be.
So are we not looking at, when you talk about approving some items, though, for going forward in Phase One, would that be one we'd need more information on, or is that one you're thinking about going forward on?
Again, that's, that's gonna be up to you guys, um, you know, this, this was, this was something that was brought up, that was, uh, the, the interest was in Phase One, so, um, if, if you would like more information on, we can, uh, otherwise, what we can do is, uh, we can move forward as, uh, as planned and get more information as we go, and then that way, if there's anything additional cost, then we can, we can address that at that time, otherwise, again, we can pull it off and, and get more clarification, it's, it's really gonna be up to however you guys wanna structure it.
Can I ask a question? Um, as far as the, the phases of the projects, um, if, if something were to fall in between a phase and another phase, is there the flexibility to kinda go out of the, outside of those parameters and, and take things, um, as they come, if, if the right information is available?
In my opinion, yes.
I would hope so, yeah, I would hope so.
I would agree too, yes, it could be.
Yeah, so...
All right, I, uh...
It just seems like, you know, we wanted to kinda utilize the system that we think works well for us for budget, and that's requiring a lot more information, I know, to work through some of these, as far as some items I know were not even costed out, so definitely those are critical, but I just thought to approve them, kind of after just hearing them presented, seemed like a pretty major step to just say they're all approved.
It is, uh, I have confidence in the numbers, knowing that they, uh, there's the potential they could be fluid.
Do we wanna go through the lists, I guess, by departments? I mean, there's, rather than just say that they were buildings, I know there was Maintenance had Phase Ones, and, kind, I don't know, it kinda took care of Conservation, I think, or not, in Phase Ones. IT had some Phase Ones, I guess I'm just looking, I guess, for clarification on what you're looking for.
Well, what's the total amount we're sitting at right now, James? I know you made some adjustments and amendments. Uh, two-point-two, I believe.
Will there, will there be an opportunity when we get into, um, our budget session here in a few months, uh, that maybe possibly there'll be some projects identified that we may be able to roll into, um, uh, Phase One, Phase Two, or in-between, like Grant was bringing up, uh, that we're not really aware of right now, or didn't really even consider being a project under this program?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would potentially be identified during our budget process with the various departments.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a lot of times that we're gonna be able to address those, uh, projects that are kinda coming to light, um, that's, that's the benefit of having these conversations, we're gonna be able to, uh, incorporate that into any budget amendment that we may need. Uh, if you wanted something that's, uh, in this fiscal year yet, then we can kinda look to see what we budget amend, or what we amend the budget for, uh, in December, and then, again, we'll have another one in May, so we can kinda wrap everything up there. Uh, anything that could wait, uh, or, you know, might need to, then that can just be incorporated into the FY twenty-three budget. So, we definitely have a lot of flexibility when it comes to, when it comes to funding these, uh, out of the ARP dollars, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would say that whenever these projects, you know, come available, we can, we can definitely look at, look at getting these funded, so...
James, go through the list now, just by department and project and the price, I mean, I, I don't think we need any details unless a supervisor asks you to stop and provide details, but let's just go through the list with the department, the project, and the amount, so that we know what we're going to, uh, be voting on.
So, so Rory kinda touched on his, but his total, uh, five-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand, again, that is taken out the VA V-box that I did not have earlier, so...
Can you review those, though, by department, as far as, so we can see the list up there or not?
Yeah.
Camelative list?
Uh, Rory's list, as well as Kim's list, are gonna be the only ones that have a separate summary, she, I, let me back that up, as, uh, Health Department does as well. Uh, let's see here. There we go.
Thanks.
Yep. Uh, so right now, you got, uh, X-ray machine, uh, and metal detector upgrade, upgrade to the phone service, uh, the point-of-use IT fire suppression system, as well as the air scrubbers for the courthouse.
So we've got estimated costs on everything on there, and that's the, the dollar amount we're coming close to, so...
Yep.
I don't know, we could approve those if we wanted to, or, I mean, if somebody wants to do it that way, or, I don't know.
I think Mr. Trump already made the motion a long time ago.
You did?
Oh, I didn't, but I'm going to.
So for the mall?
Yes, I, actually, I will make the motion to approve all Phase One projects funded by the American Rescue Plan, as presented by the Board of Supervisors.
Could I still see the list?
Yes, and I'll ask that we do the, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, James.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, let me, and again, these, these haven't changed since, uh, since they were presented by each department, but, um...
You will? Now, the dryers, the washers and dryers in this one, as far as greater efficiencies?
Yeah, that, uh, those numbers are incorrect on both the dryers and the, the washing machines, um, I actually did not have a dollar amount in there, but we're probably gonna be in the neighborhood of, uh, about twenty thousand each, uh, those are large, very large commercial washer and dryers, and we are actually working on getting proposals on those.
Is there how much?
I, I would venture to say we're probably, yeah, we're probably closer to that.
Cause they're pretty heavy, yeah, so it'll be about eighty.
Rory?
Yes.
Rory, on, on some of these projects, too, uh, is it possible to, um, give a sidebar to the board on how they were funded before? Um, I believe the X-ray machine downstairs was through, um, through, was it through Sheriff Roman Borg, or whatever?
I believe it was, but yes, I can absolutely pull the file, uh, find the files on these and give some back history.
Okay, and I think the washing machines also were funded through a diff, they weren't funded through regular budget, they were funded through other channels, whether it was commissary over, and I'm just talking about the jail now, because those are the ones that you brought up, but I, I wanna know how they were funded before, so we can keep that in the back of our mind.
And they're needed, I suppose, right now because of age, they're probably quite old?
Yeah, we're, like I had mentioned before, we're starting to see an uptick in downtime with those units, and, uh, it's, it's creating, uh, more maintenance on our end to keep them up and going.
Don't we have a couple residential units over there that...
We've got, uh, one residential that they just use for shop regs, and, uh, we've replaced that, so, gosh, probably since I've been here, maybe three or four different times, uh, it gets a lot of abuse, but these, what I'm referencing here, these are the main, uh, industrial-size, uh, units, uh, that, uh, do all the bedding, uniforms and such, uh, inmate uniforms.
Mm-hmm.
So, James, I'll get you a, a better, uh, number on those, but, yeah.
Okay, so the cost for the dryers and the washing machines has been adjusted?
Yep. Uh, this one was held off just due to the, um, space study.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And then, this was what we were just looking at as well, the fifth-floor HVAC renovation was also held off, uh, due to the space study.
So are we gonna hold off on the security doors, since we don't have a cost?
Yeah, I would, I would say that we would, yes.
Rory, will the space needs assessment address some of these security issues? Cause I noticed there's some voids in, uh, security doors at the Pinecrest building, not just on the fifth floor.
Absolutely, yeah, and fifth, uh, we're gonna be spending a great deal of time on the fifth floor over at that facility, because we have, um, not only those security issues here, but we'll also have some ADA, uh, issues that will need to be defined, um, with regards to the restrooms over there, so I do anticipate, uh, this, the space study to, to, to have some pretty useful information for us with regards to that floor.
Thank you.
Is that doors, the doors, um, we're talking, what, three, four years now, that we were supposed to replace all the doors in the courthouse, and that's still not done?
What we've, yeah, we actually have, uh, a project that we put together, but unfortunately, what we found out on those doors is they'd have to be a solid door, and what we found out, that, um, the, the visibility that the guards would have seeing, uh, the stairwell, uh, just hinders that visibility, so we just have to decide if that's, uh, something that we're okay with, um, to meet...
Losing a lot of energy through some of them doors.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to mention on that space, uh, um, assessment also, that does include, uh, which I do think this will be helpful, but it does include, uh, eight onsite work sessions throughout this process, so what I envision is, as we go through this process, um, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to gather information, and hopefully be able to really better prepare ourselves at budget time as well, if there's something on here that, uh, that is identified, that we can talk about at budget time. I know it's a twenty-four-week process, but we're, we're gonna be doing some pretty intensive communication throughout that process, too, so hopefully that helps.
Yes.
I have a question for James, I think, on this one, as far as adding the three bays, if somewhere in the process of the next few months, or whatever, we determined it was more, was needed, or fewer, or whatever, um, we could make an adjustment then, I mean, obviously, these projects aren't gonna happen overnight, so once we approve those for today, we could still adjust.
Yep.
Great.
So that's the maintenance list here.
Okay.
Uh, we have the digitizing of transfer books for the auditor's office. There we go. Uh, for the recorder's office, again... Uh, for the recorder's office, again, digitizing being done in that office, as well as the office reconfiguration. This one, we kept on there only because, as far as the, as far as the space study goes, they're still gonna need updated desks and spreading their people out. And so that's why that one is left on there.
So that's more for furniture than?
Correct, yes.
Than just for reconfiguring?
Yep, yep. Uh, and then IT, this is the, this is the list for IT, and I can have Kim speak a little bit more on that. I'm gonna share a different screen here. That way I can encompass all of our Phase One lists.
So some of the things that I had in Phase One really got pushed back to Phase Two just because of the space study. But the owl that we talked about using for meeting rooms, some switches upgrading already to get ready for the fiber project. And we don't have a price on this, but Rory was going to have the company that set up their recording session and that, look at our situation again, to see if we could do something a little differently for Zoom. The camera in the server room, that would allow us to be outside of that room for that fire suppression, badge access to our side of the office. And equipment for the county attorney's office staff to work from home. And at that point, I have the clerical staff included in there. Software to allow the election office to access iVoters from home, the check reader...
Sorry.
And, let's see, where'd we go? The copier, firewall replacement, we want to make sure we get that done by June, and that will include three years of support. Redone it, ISP provider, and looking at a three-year commitment, or five-year commitment with a $600 monthly fee. And then wireless access points in the garden area are the things that I think, scroll down, I might, I think that's it for Phase One.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So...
Did this address, like, I'm just thinking, when we said attorney's staff to work from home, were there others as far as our staff that?
Well, and I've got people, we did 10 with the CARES Act. I did 10 recently for people, and then I've got another 10, but I've got some in my budget for desktop replacement. So, I mean, we could use our money for that if we want to, but I do have replacement for computers already in my budget, so it just depends on how you want to do that.
Okay.
And then the one thing that James and I had talked about since this was put together is to also look at some other options for the VPN. So I'm always gonna be able to come up with more things, you know, depending, and I'm assuming that when they do the major adjustment, if that's what happens, that we could do that, so.
That sounds like it's gonna be kind of a fluid timeline anyway, that we kind of...
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, you know, again, anything that's not approved today, or anything that doesn't have a dollar amount today, it can easily just be placed in Phase Two. So, believe it or not, we're gonna be having those conversations here in about two months. So, you know, we're gonna have a little break, so to speak, and then we're gonna be right back at it. So it's, it is gonna be a little bit sooner than, sooner than we think, so.
I think the timing is good considering where we're entering the budget discussions.
Me too.
Any questions?
Okay. I don't think so. So the check reader and the copier and those types of things, as far as when you talked about, I'm not so sure, but from an efficiency standpoint, not so much as it relates to making us safer.
Right, 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 right.
And more efficient.
Yeah, just more efficient, so, okay.
Uh, this is Washburn's list. Ben had spoken about those. I don't know if you have any questions regarding those.
I just have a comment. I mean, I think this is a perfect example of what this funding should be used for.
And this is all that, which would be county expenses, not the Washburn residence?
Correct, yeah. This would just be the, out of the ARP funds, correct?
Because I know that we've talked about their fees and what we'd have to do to increase their fees to...
Actually, any of that work done out there would've come under their user fees, not county. We're using it as a county fee, but that's a separate entity out there, so anything done to that lagoon in the past would've been under user fees, that they'd have to raise their rates to cover all that stuff.
Correct.
So this would be like a one-time? I guess we've not really talked about that too much. This would be a one-time, the county take care of it and make these changes?
Well, and that's...
I think so, Linda, for the mere fact that it probably benefits, what's being done, it probably benefits, oh, how I want to say it, not, it probably benefits all by upgrading that lagoon as far as breathing and blah, blah, blah. But under normal circumstances, that would've been an obligation through that Washburn sewer user fee situation, it wouldn't have been under our regular tax dollars.
And we've talked...
It's a good opportunity to use some of this money to upgrade.
And that's still a discussion we probably are gonna need to have with the Washburn residence, or somebody's gonna need to have.
Yeah, and that's gonna be something that we can, we can address now, we can address later, we can, I mean, it's, it is completely up to you. But, you know, when we start looking at these things, you know, dredging the lagoon is a giant project, and that's something that we can't necessarily control, but the DNR kind of tells us that we kind of have to do that. Good, bad, right, or wrong, you know, they don't have the fund balance to do that as it sits right now. And so if we don't use ARP funds, we can use, we can use a different source of funds, have us pay us back, that kind of thing. But again, it gets, it kind of gets a little bit messy. I think this is a great opportunity to use these tax dollars, or not these tax dollars, but these ARP dollars, in a way that's an allowable expense to kind of get the lagoon up and running. Now, if they come back and they say, yes, we need to dredge the lagoon, and we don't need to, or, and we choose not to use the ARP funds, you know, we could, we could bond for it like we did earlier, and then have them pay the bond proceeds. We can, I mean, there's, we can pull it out of reserves and have them pay us back reserves. We've done that in the past. There's a lot of different funding ways to do this, but I think that this is gonna be...
I think this is a funding opportunity we cannot, we'd be foolish to take advantage of.
I would agree.
It's just the discussions. I mean, in the future, we need to start having with the residents, I guess, so that...
Right.
We have it covered, because we won't have this kind of an opportunity probably again.
Yeah, and I can't remember what Ben had said. Ben had said something that if these items were taken care of that are on the ARP list, they should be set for the next 30-plus years. So it is a great opportunity.
And I think, James, I think this is a good opportunity to make these investments. But we do need to come up with that sustainable funding level, for when these investments need to happen in a couple decades, because we can't count on this kind of opportunity lining up at that same time again. And so I think one thing helpful is if we, you know, make that presentation to the residents of Washburn, show them what their fees would've cost had we needed to make these investments without this money right now, just to show them, you know, just to get their buy-in on the project.
Yeah. Yeah, Tom, were you involved in this when this was first set up?
Yeah, really what happened was years ago, they ran into the RET. The county quote loaned $40,000 to that account to get it back into the black. The Board of Supervisors went out there twice. We raised their user fees, and it was a big deal. I mean, we heard a lot about it. We packed a house out there for residents. But at that time too, they weren't only paying their user fees, they were paying a payment for the bond to build it. Since then, they did pay back that $40,000 back to our reserves. They don't have the bond payment anymore, and it's probably been, oh, I'm gonna guess, it's probably been 12, 14 years since we raised user rates. So Chris is right. We get this back on good, sound footing, we probably should take a long-term look at it, and maybe see what we're gonna need in the future and build up that bank for those residents. Otherwise, if we had to do this project, this lagoon project, their rates would go sky-high.
Right.
So I think this is an opportunity to, once we get through this, to take a look at it, and maybe potentially look at where do they need to be to build up, because I'm not sure, James, do you know what the balance is right now?
I don't have an exact dollar amount.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it needs, if we start now, then it can be lower amount than it would be if we wait till there's issues, so.
Me go.
I think we need to do that soon.
Exactly.
Okay.
So maybe at some point next year, we should discuss the rates.
Yeah.
I think so. It won't be popular, but it is what it is.
No, it won't be.
Right.
No, no.
Uh, so, so that's the line, or that's the list for Washburn. Moving on to VA, they have a shelter space. Yolanda did get a quote for 54. I do believe that does include pouring of the concrete. He did want to make that area a little bit more stable. And then electrical and some fans and stuff out there too, so. Uh, and then finally, Health Department presented their list last week, and... this, I think it's coming here. There we go.
That's the one they wanted to replace the fleet.
So this is the, this is the list that they presented as well.
We're not sure about that fleet management one, though. Were we as far as doing all the fleet, since we're on a rotation now and replacing vehicles and...
Well, we're not on, we're not on a rotation right now, and that's part of the problem. Uh, you know, I disagree that we, we need to replace all of the current fleet. There's, there's a few in there that have been replaced in the last, you know, two, three, four years, that I believe that would be just fine. But I don't necessarily disagree with getting an up-to-date fleet, only because they do have some aging vehicles out there, and at some point, this will fall under the taxpayers'. And so this will help long-term. And then, yes, we can get them on a rotation that will help lessen the burden moving forward. So, again, I don't, I don't agree with fully funding the full 19 vehicles, but, you know...
I think we need the mileage and some of the features and mileage.
I wouldn't be in favor of...
Tom? I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Tom?
Well, my question was, I thought last week we were talking about 500,000? I was going through the paperwork, and it appears to me that it's $800,000 for the fleet. Not only the cars, but that other...
The mobile.
...is lab or whatever.
Or if we put the mobile unit.
Strong reservations on that. But James, we've been buying cars over the years. That one year, they bought a car towards the end of the fiscal year, using other monies. So we may not be on a rotation, but we've been buying cars pretty on a regular basis. I think we need to come to some kind of a criteria that we don't rotate cars out that have 90,000 miles on them.
Unless they've been problems.
Especially when they're running good. And, so I think, I've got some, a lot of questions yet on that fleet thing, and personally, I wouldn't be prepared to vote on that today. I mean, if we do vote on it, I won't support it.
Well, and we didn't know that...
Questions, not only on that, but also on that.
Yeah, the mobile unit. We didn't have a cost, we just had an estimate for that too. We didn't have any idea what that could come in at, or how it was gonna be used, I guess. I'd like more information on that too. So there are a couple things on there.
Can we get a list of the vehicles they have, the year of the vehicle and the mileage?
I can get that.
And if they're running well.
There was 17 of them parked there the other day.
I think they said they used them about every day, though, didn't they? Just about, or isn't that what they, didn't they ask?
That's what I was told, but I've yet to be, go out there and see less than 10 parked on a regular basis.
So should we hold off on their whole list?
Well, I wanna...
We could mark the tires and...
I wanna amend my motion to approve all Phase One projects except for Health Department at this time.
Need more information as well.
I agree.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Additional comments and questions?
With that fleet management...
Does this mean we would want to take a look at this again in a couple weeks?
Yeah.
Is that what we're saying?
I, yes, within, even next week.
How far out should we push it? Next week or the week after?
As soon as possible, is kind of what you're...
Week after, okay. So...
Yeah, we can, we can do it any, you know, from my timeline is just fine. You know, maybe Nefisa can come back and answer some questions if you guys have any, but yeah, it's kind of...
Well, the numbers will say a lot.
So, nope, that's...
How many vehicles and age and if they don't know.
And in the meantime, I'll get you that list as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Item number 12, reports and information from the board. I do have a couple items, but I want, who?
Go, Mr. Chair.
Mr. White, happy birthday. I don't know if you celebrate him or not, but I celebrate your birthdays for you, so happy birthday.
I will be celebrating later.
And...
Yep, happy birthday.
A week ago, we received information from the Government Finance Officers Association that our 2020 Comprehensive Annual Report qualifies for their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So, Mr. Perry, congratulations.
Thank you. That's a team effort. That's not just on me, that's, you know, the auditor's office, that's everyone in, treasurer's office, everyone involved in the audit. It's really a team effort, and hats off to the hard work that everybody puts into that audit and the audit process, not only during the audit, but throughout the entire year. Just, we have a lot of great employees out here, and that's just, it's an award for everybody, so.
Well, I like the way you stay on top of things, James, myself, so, you and Dean, so, congratulations. Also, along that line, November 11th coming up, Columbus High School is inviting all veterans, I don't know if they want it like that, but that's what he told me, all veterans out for breakfast out at Columbus High School. They're gonna have breakfast, then they're gonna have a short program. Breakfast is from 7:30 to 9:00, then there'll be a short program to follow. And Memorial Hall, I don't know about what we're gonna do this year, if somebody took over the position of, or taking care of the deal, so it's up in the air right now, so...
And the polls today are open till 8:00 PM, correct, Mr. Veder?
Yes, sir.
Any others?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those who do not want to adjourn say no.